Good evening, I'd like to call the March 11, 2023 meeting of the Greenville City Council to order. I'm Mayor PJ Connolly, presiding over tonight's meeting. First, I'd like to call on Councilmember Matt Scully for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to start with a prayer from my faith, which is in the Episcopal Church. This is a prayer from our prayer book for our local governments. Almighty God, our heavenly Father, send down upon those who hold office in this city of Greenville the Spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor Connolly.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Daniels.
Present.
Councilmember Foreman.
Here.
Councilmember Blackburn.
Present.
Councilmember Scully.
Here.
Councilmember Robinson.
Here.
Councilmember Willis.
Present.
All right, Mayor Connolly, you have a call.
Thank you very much. Will I move on to the approval of tonight's agenda? Mr. Manager, any recommended changes?
No recommended changes, Mayor.
All right, do I have a motion to approve?
To move second.
All right, motion has been made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Mayor Pro Tem Daniels. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Dis opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to special recognitions.
I'd like to ask Chris Cox to come forward. Tonight, we have the pleasure of recognizing Chris Cox. Chris Cox is a project manager one in the Capitol Division of the Engineering Department. Chris manages multiple projects related to our street and stormwater systems. He is always looking for opportunity to expand his knowledge and grow professionally. As such, he has successfully completed the Advanced Education Program requirement for becoming a North Carolina Master Road Scholar. A Master Road Scholar program is an advanced professional development opportunity offered by the North Carolina Local Technical Assistance Program at the Institute for Transportation in Research and Education. The purpose of the program is to recognize local government personnel who have significantly increased their knowledge of road maintenance procedures and improve their technical and managerial skills. By successfully completing 21 of the Road Scholar courses offered through the center and submitting a case study of a transportation project in Greenville, Chris has earned this professional distinction for himself and for the city of Greenville. Chris, your achievements speak volumes about your unwavering integrity, commitment, and dedication to this community. It hasn't gone unnoticed, and we want to thank you for acquiring such a high level of expertise. And I will say that over the last several years, last eight or so, the city has made significant strides in what we have done for our local streets. And it's because of the professionalism of Chris, of individuals like yourself, that we've been able to make such strides. You are just a great representation of our community. And thank you from the bottom of our hearts for everything that you do for the city of Greenville on a daily basis. God bless you. Do you want to recognize your family? My wife, Crystal, and my son, Christopher. We appreciate everything. All right, now I'll call our bean counters up. Let's see, our purchasing department. We are pleased to have here tonight our Financial Services Purchasing Division. They were awarded the 2023 Sustained Professional Purchasing Award on March 6th. This marks the 16th year that the purchasing division has received this award. That is absolutely outstanding. The award is presented annually by the North Carolina Association of Governmental Purchasing to member agencies that have demonstrated excellence in purchasing standards during the calendar year. The criteria for the award include the use of technology, minority outreach, staff certification, customer training, vendor training, and the use of recycled products. The city of Greenville is one of 16 agencies throughout the association to receive this award. Congratulations to our purchasing team on another year of sustained professional purchasing. You will not find a better purchasing division here than what we have in the city of Greenville. The work you do is outstanding on a daily basis. You keep us all in check on every single day. Thank you so much for all that you do. All right, where's Margot Clark at? Come on up. Come on. All right. This past year, it was certainly an all-hands-on-deck approach led by the city of Greenville's Office of Special Events, championed by Margot Clark, and the Downtown Greenville Partnership that paid off recently with the city's annual Pirate Fest. It was named Event of the Year by the North Carolina Association of Festivals and Events during its annual conference for event planners held in Charlotte in January. The April 2023 Pirate Fest at the Town Common was attended by swashbucklers of all ages. The event showcased the best of eastern North Carolina, from artists to restaurants, and unique recreational activities while also incorporating a variety of pirate activities and live entertainment, including a free concert by Maddie and Tay at the Town Common Amphitheater. This is a very large and popular event and is made possible by the participation of all the city departments and Downtown Greenville Partnership co-hosts. And I gotta say that what Margot has done, not only with Pirate's Fest, but with all of our special events citywide, is just beyond amazing. We really, we really did not have a presence of special events as of five years ago, but Margot has taken that on, and she is the brainchild of many of the events that we have in the downtown area on a monthly basis. And I just want to say thank you for being a champion, not only for Pirate's Fest, but for everything you do in the hosting of special events. It truly makes a difference as a destination community for the special events that we have, and a lot of that goes right straight to Margot. Thank you so much for all that you do.
All right, now we'll move on to the public comment period. The public comment period is a period reserved for comments by the public. Items that were or are scheduled to be a subject of a public hearing conducted in this meeting or another meeting during the same week shall not be discussed. A total of 30 minutes is allocated with each individual being allowed no more than three minutes. Individuals who register with a city clerk to speak will speak in the order registered until the allot of 30 minutes expires. If time remains after all persons who have registered and spoken, individuals who do not register will have an opportunity to speak until the allot of 30 minutes expires. Madam Clerk, our first speaker?
We do not have any registered speakers.
Anyone present that would like to speak during the public comment period, please come forward, state your name for the record. You have three minutes. I don't know, I have this feeling that our wonderful DA would like to say a few words. I'm just kidding. I'm just, you don't have to. I'm just throwing it. Hey, that was quick, though.
Drew, you can speak.
So now we'll close the public comment period. We will move on to my favorite part, the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Included on our consent agenda is item number four, approval of the minutes. Item number five, resolution of intent to close Proctor Circle. Item number six, resolution of intent to close unimproved sections of Law Street, Second Street Terrace, and Sycamore Street and College Heights subdivision. Item number seven, resolution accepting dedication of right-of-way and easements for Davenport Farms at Emerald Park Phase Seven. Item number eight, resolution accepting dedication of right-of-way and easements for Davenport Farms at Emerald Park Phase Eight. Authorization to acquire permanent drainage easement and temporary construction easement and reimbursement for removal of improvements within project area for the Cedar Lane Stream Stabilization Project. Item number 10, resolution authorizing execution of inter-local agreement between the city of Greenville and County of Pitt for connection to the county's core communication system. Item number 11, authorization to apply for assistance to firefighters' grant to purchase a fire alarm system for Fire Station Three and seven exhaust treatment systems for existing fire apparatus. Item number 12, contract award for HVAC replacement of rooftop unit number one at City Hall. Item number 13, contract award for professional services for fire rescue stations one through seven, facility landscape maintenance. Item number 14, resolution declaring two vehicles and equipment as surplus and authorization to purchase one replacement vehicle for the police department. And item number 15, various tax refunds greater than $100.
Councilmember Blackburn?
I would like to request that we remove items six and nine from the consent agenda. And other than those two items, I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
All right, motion has been made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Councilmember Robinson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Dis opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Move on to item number six.
Item number six, resolution of intent to close unimproved sections of Law Street, Second Street Terrace, and Sycamore Street and College Heights subdivision. I'll call forward Director of Engineering Lisa Kirby for any questions that you might have.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm available for questions if anybody had any specific questions regarding the intent to close.
Could you just talk, I have had some questions about this. Could you kind of describe in general what's happening here?
So the requests came in from Cypress Glen to close the unimproved right-of-way along these three roads. It's my understanding Cypress Glen intends to expand.
And these are, these are rights-of-way where if Cypress Glen weren't there, where there could have been roads, but now there's not going to be roads, so we're saying they are no longer going to be roads?
They are dedicated right-of-way. They would have never become roads if a developer hadn't taken and built homes on the backside of them. So they're unimproved right-of-way right now.
And so what we're doing is, we're saying, let's see, can we get back, they will no longer be rights-of-way?
Correct. And then they go back to the property owners, the adjacent property owners, the property does.
Okay. Have you had any questions or inquiries about this?
No, ma'am.
Okay. With that, I will make a motion to approve.
Motion made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Councilmember Scully. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Dis opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Okay, item number nine, authorization to acquire permanent drainage easement and temporary construction easement and reimbursement for removal of improvements within project area for the Cedar Lane Stream Stabilization Project. I'll again ask Director of Engineering, Lisa Kirby, is available if you have any questions.
Do we have a picture of this, or can you describe this? And the reason I wanted this pulled off the consent agenda is because in the Cedar Lane area, there is, I know Cedar, Cedar Lane, Adams, Golden, there's flooding over there, there's washouts. You all are familiar with one.
Right.
Yeah. So I want to find out a little, if you could present a little more about what this is and how that might help that area.
I can, I can. So this project in particular, there are actually two projects, if you look through Capital Improvement Land. One is Cedar Lane Stream Stabilization, which is really probably not named correctly because it's Reedy Branch Stream Stabilization. The reason it was named Cedar is because initially it was envisioned that it would go along with Cedar Lane Drainage Improvements, which is actually a separate project. So this project specifically looks at about 1,500 linear feet of Reedy Branch, and the intent is to stabilize the banks along that section.
And where about is that located?
It goes from 14th Street to behind J.C. Park.
So might, let's see, let me try to get that. So could that have an effect on that Golden Adams area?
More than likely, no. It's going to be the Cedar Lane Drainage Improvements that directly impact that area.
Okay. And specifically, do you think that's going to help with folks who are having problems with flooding in that area?
It's really more about erosion and loss of property, this project is. So this should preserve their property and also allow the system to access a floodplain, which would help slow down velocities and prevent erosion from the future.
Do you think this, and we can talk about this after the meeting, but do you think that there is one property owner who's especially concerned about erosion and his property being washed away? Will this help that particular property owner?
We've had several people come in about erosion issues along the stream, so I'm not sure specifically which one, but I'd be happy if you want to email me, or we can talk after to make sure that it is addressed. I will say, this is just to acquire the drainage easements for the purposes of the project. We anticipate coming back in May with a word of the construction contract. So we'll give you a more robust presentation on what the project actually includes at that point.
Fantastic. And this will be dealing with stormwater?
Correct.
That's great. I look forward to that. Thank you. And motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Councilmember Scully. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Dis opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
We shall move on to item number 16.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 16, presentations by Board and Commissions of the Multimodal Transportation Commission. I'll call forward Commission Chairperson Arsenia Dixon for the presentation.
Good evening, city council members. As stated, I am, okay, Arsenia Dixon, the chair for the Multimodal Transportation Commission. As the PowerPoint shows, we meet the third Wednesday every other month. Our next meeting is March 20th at 5:30 PM in the conference room of the G.K. Butterfield Trans Park. We are a seven-member commission, but we currently only have six members. We're still waiting on appointment of our next member. During the year of 2023, various commission members participated in these activities to improve their knowledge and understanding of transportation and mobility to improve for the city of Greenville. With our advising partners, we provided input and feedbacks on the various projects that they're overseeing, as well as we presented with them concerns from the community at large and concern from the board of the impact that this will have on the city. We provided letters of support to Senator Tom Tillis and then Senator Don Davis, who is now Congressman Don Davis, letting him know that we do support these two projects that have been presented by the city of Greenville. The community concerns, as they're listed above, we had multiple citizens come in discussing the need to approve ADA compliance, discussing the need for them to be able to access the bus system safely. We have areas that are prone to accidents. There were concerns about lowering the speed limit and having other visual indicators as to problems in these areas, excessive speeds in the subdivisions that have cut-throughs. There are multiple subdivisions throughout the cities that are being used as cut-through that is providing dangerous environments for children and other residents that live there. Low visibility, particularly, the discussion was on Memorial Drive, that we need more lights and more visuals through that area so that you can see the people as they're crossing. From Fifth Street all the way down to the airport is a very dark corridor to go through, and with the current construction, it's become even more dangerous. Identifiable crosswalks. Although we do have designated crosswalks, there are a lot of areas that citizens are crossing through. Some are being prone to the car versus pedestrian accidents, such as the dip-through down around Hastings Ford's. There's been accidents down on Thomas Langston, as well as off of 10th Street near Coppertown Beach. These are the ongoing initiatives that the city is still working on and proposing that we can, will continue to support throughout the rest of 2024 and moving forward. Our goals for 2024, our bylaws are outdated. They consist of two boards that have been combined into the one, as well as we still have the COVID bylaws. Therefore, we are working to improve our bylaws and to ensure that the city of Greenville has a better understanding of what it is that we do. Increased community involvement, we will be attending community meetings. We will be attending city council member meetings. This way, when we come in, it's just, ah, that's the Multimodal Transportation Board, and not, well, who's that? Why are they here? We're also looking at engaging the city council members more, which includes the sharing of our priorities, which are listed. By doing so, not only will we meet with our liaison, Mr. Scully, we will also meet with our individual representatives for our areas so that we can share with you what our concerns, our visions, and how we can move the city of Greenville forward and build better for transportation, sidewalks, pedestrian, bicycles, because it's all a concern, and our area is continuing to grow. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your hard work. Everybody here, I think, can attest to how important it is to have safe streets, safe modes of transportation. So we appreciate the hard work that you guys put in. It's not, it doesn't go unnoticed. So thank you for all you do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Wonderful presentation. Good to see the voice of the multimodal up here.
Thank you.
Yeah, good seeing you too. Please come back.
Good to see you, Ms. Dixon.
Good to see you too, Ms. Willis.
My question was, in terms of ADA compliance, you've listed some initiatives that the city of Greenville was taking. Do any of those specifically target our ADA compliance, Kirby?
From some of the areas, do you target the ADA compliance, but we still have a lot that have been identified in previous years that have not been met. Off the top of my head, I can think of on Highway 11 in front of Food Lion, there is a bus stop there, but there is no way for somebody with the wheelchair to get up there. I go through there often. There's a gentleman that gets on the bus. His wheelchair is left sitting in the street unless somebody moves it off to the side so he could get on the bus. We still have areas that do not have all the correct markings on the sidewalks and where the sidewalks have been improved. So there is still a growing concern. Although the buses themselves do implement and adhere to ADA compliance, we still have some work to be done, as well as we need shelters, because we do have a lot of citizens that are sitting out in the elements.
And so then what's our process in terms of that information getting to the city manager's office? Is that through these presentations? Is that through Councilmember Scully? How are we?
And that's in close communication with both our Engineering Department and Public Works Department to identify those areas, in which of these projects are included in upcoming projects that we may have in the city.
Okay. And so does Ms. Kirby meet regularly with the committee, or what are we doing right now?
I would say they keep open communication with each other.
Councilmember Blackburn?
Thank you. I do not want to put you on the spot.
It's okay.
But I want to thank you for that presentation. That was really exciting. Whenever we talk about pedestrian safety, I've been looking at studies that are showing that pedestrians are more at risk than ever because cars are bigger and they have a bigger blind spot. I see some nodding heads. And it's heartbreaking. We have had pedestrian deaths in our city. There was, every time, you know, I hear about this, it's just absolutely heartbreaking. Anytime, well, any accident, but we are at greater risk. So I really appreciate the attention you're bringing to it. And of course, whenever we look at ADA compliance, that is essential, and I know we have some issues. What I wanted to ask you, and again, you can feel free to communicate with me or not about this, by email or phone call or tonight, as you're comfortable, but I know that this commission was formed by putting together the old Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee with basically the Public Transportation or the Bus Committee, and putting those two together. I have to say, I have worried that the charge was too broad. And it's true, you all have a heavy lift in terms of the things that we are expecting you to address. And looking at your presentation, I can tell that you're doing a fantastic job. My question to you, to the extent that you're comfortable responding to it, is do you feel that your scope is too broad? Do you feel that it should go back to being two committees, three, or do you feel like it's okay the way it is? Is there something that we as a council can do to help you with your mission?
At the present time, I do believe that the board is okay the way it is. We do have representatives from the Transportation Section, Bicycle, and Pedestrian. So when we hold our meetings now, we try to ensure that each of those areas are covered, each of those areas are, concerns are addressed. We also attempt to attend meetings that are specific to each component. We do have a broad spectrum, however, because they are all interconnected, I do feel like this is the appropriate place for it to be. Moving forward, as stated, we will be, because we just received a new liaison, Mr. Scully, so we will be bringing him up to date on what it is that we're working on, what it is that we're looking to improve, hoping he will present it back to you as the board. As well as stated, we will be engaging with each and every one of you, regardless of if you are our direct members or if not. So this way, we can still have a working partnership and collaboration to get the job done to build better transportation for the city of Greenville.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Very good.
You answered my question in your clarity. I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to the next item.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 17, ordinance prohibiting the unauthorized use of limited-use dumpsters or limited-use trash receptacles. I will call forward our Director of Public Works, Kevin Mulligan, for presentation.
Good afternoon, or good evening, council. As the city manager said, this is our ordinance on the unauthorized use of limited-use dumpsters or limited-use trash receptacles. Here is a picture of, and you see the yellow areas, those yellow areas highlight the Ninth Street Dickinson Parking Lot, Green Street Parking Lot, Merchant's Lot, Roses Lot, Hodges Lot. Those are the main areas we're kind of focusing on, but this ordinance is not limited to those areas. This ordinance accounts for all city property that have dumpsters, receptacles collected by a city or contractor. Actually, examples of additional city locations would be City Hall, would be any park, certainly Town Common, Riverburke's Tennis Center, they have dumpsters out there. So all city facilities. What the ordinance does not include, it does not include private areas, shopping centers, and the dumpsters, they're not part of this. This is city property, city dumpsters on city property, or, excuse me, city property where there may be private dumpsters, or city dumpsters. So this is a picture of that top-left one with the blue dumpsters, that is Merchant's Lot right outside our building here, and, you know, viewing those two bags that are in front of those dumpsters on city cameras. We do have a robust camera system in the city, but, you know, someone without a contract, right, placed those. In many conversations with both GFL and Republic, there are two contracts, two vendors that have a contract with Republic at that location. There are many people who use that location, right? Whether they get it into the dumpster or not, right? So there's two things going on here. This ordinance addresses folks who do not have a contract, right? And we'll talk about what the ordinance is. I just want to show a picture of what we're trying to talk about here. This is Hodges Lot, that lower right, you see some wooden pallets there, and then part of what becomes the problem is that GFL- And then part of what becomes the problem is that GFL has a contract with five or six vendors. And then there's ten or fifteen people that are, ten or fifteen businesses that are using this. So their pickup schedule is based on the fact that there's only five contracts there, right? If fifteen vendors are using it, we, we see it start to overflow and we see problems with that. And what ends up happening is, you see in that lower right, city forces are, are cleaning up some of the areas afterwards. So again, this is a city property with private dumpsters that have a, a contract or a lack of a contract with, with some businesses. So let me describe what this ordinance is. It shall be unlawful for any person to place, deposit, discard, dispose, or leave any trash refuse or garbage in or upon a limited-use dumpster or limited-use trash receptacle unless that person is an authorized person. And here's the definition of person. So individual firm, partnership, association, corporation, limited liability company or, or other organization or group. So we wanted to just, we wanted to describe and did want to shout out to Donald Phillips, who crafted this, this ordinance. So a lot of excellent work by the, by the city attorney's office. We didn't want to focus on one person. We wanted to focus on an individual or a company because we've seen repetitive disposal of refuse at some of the places that a company is going up there and someone who works there is, is throwing out the garbage every day. So it seems clear they don't have any idea that they don't have a contract, right? They're being directed to dispose of at the nearest dumpster. So here is what we're proposing to do, and this is the first of two presentations or two hearings. Subjectable penalties, there'll be a, a civil and a criminal parts of this. A ticket in the amount as follows, a hundred dollars for the first violation. A second violation within three hundred sixty-five days is two hundred fifty dollars. Third and any additional violation would be five hundred dollars. All right, there also is the potential for a, a criminal charge, and that is a class-three misdemeanor with penalty of not less than a hundred and not more than five hundred. So you could do either or you could do both. All right, so I think obviously we would want to focus on compliance, gaining compliance, and probably go the civil route with the first violation, right? So with, with ticketing and our police department and public works will work closely to, to initiate this process. And it's not enough just to have an ordinance and make it illegal. You have to post a sign that says it's illegal, right? So these signs will be posted, limited-use dumpster or limited-use trash receptacle, authorized users only, and, and publish the city code. And this signage allows us to issue tickets or, or have PD make it a criminal offense. All right, so recommendation is council here, the first of two presentations, and vote to approve the ordinance on Thursday, March fourteenth, you know, later this week. Any questions on this?
Councilmember Blackburn?
When do the criminal penalties kick in?
They could kick in immediately. You know, I, I would probably defer to a city attorney. But in my conversation with the city attorney, we could start those immediately. We don't have to wait. We probably would have the civil penalties first. And then if someone, someone is continuing to not have a contract and we issue multiple tickets, then, then it would seem like that would be the avenue to best address it.
And Councilmember Blackburn, clearly our, our efforts here to, is to just enforce a compliance with, with the statute, I mean, with, with the ordinance. We want to make sure that those that are utilizing the dumpsters in the downtown area are authorized because they have a contract for use of those dumpsters. So civil penalties would be the first opportunity that we would look at first. And go through each one of those different steps, one, two, three.
I'm just along those lines. I'm delighted to see this. I know we've had many discussions in our workshops about the problem of just ugly garbage collections downtown or lack of, just ugly, unsightly garbage and refuse in our downtown areas that are caused by too many people putting garbage in places where it's not set up for them to do so. They don't have a contract. The people, the companies collecting the refuse aren't expecting this volume. So I really applaud this. I'm really glad to see it. I do have one question, and I, I know that our city attorney will provide the fine line of distinction on that. But if, if somebody has a, a paper bag or a cup they want to throw away and they see the dumpster and they just toss it in there because they don't want to litter because they're being good citizens, but they also don't want to carry around that grimy cup. I know, are we going to go after those people? Just for throwing, you know, a small item in the dumpster?
Don't know if that'd be the intent of this ordinance, but certainly technically they'd be subject to, to civil penalties.
I'll answer that question, no. We will not be, because ultimately we want, we are, we want to look at the businesses that are distributing, disposing of high volumes of solid waste into these dumpsters and creating litter. They don't have contracts.
Unauthorized.
That is the intent of this.
The big garbage bags and, and, and commercial entities perhaps that are dumping large volumes.
Three, four, five times a week.
Yeah, got it, got it. Thank you.
Councilmember Scully?
Thank you, Mr. Mulligan. It is a problem. It's an ongoing problem. And as an operator downtown that pays for dumpsters, I really do appreciate the effort to regulate and make sure everybody's in compliance and following the rules. Because it's gross, you know, it's, it's a real problem. It's a health concern. It's an eyesore. And it's just not fair to those of us that are down there doing a really good job. So thank you very much. Would the, did I see trash cans? Would they be included?
This is limited, dumpsters and receptacles, so trash cans, yes.
Because I do see, I don't think it's as big a problem, but some smaller businesses who have their trash from the day tossed in the trash can. Would that be, I think it should, but just a question of clarity.
Yeah, I'd say, I'd say this, the, so any of the public areas that have dumpsters, we have cameras there. We do have a robust camera system and we're able to really track where, where, what the, the offending business, where that business is located. In the receptacles, we have a number of cameras out there and we can generally locate those that are throwing garbage in those receptacles that do not have a contract as well, but maybe not as, as foolproof as the dumpsters.
Right, yeah, there's some gray area there that I understand. But I trust that staff will use good judgment and make those determinations.
The biggest goal here is just to gain compliance, is not to start issuing tickets or arresting anyone.
And then how would staff determine between a person and the business? How do we know if the offender is a person acting in there in the corridor if they've been directed by their boss to go and do this?
That is a good question.
I, I will answer that question.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Scully, I think the, the first opportunity there would be a, a warning citation because ultimately that business would get a visit from city staff and law enforcement in our public works department say, hey, putting on notice, you need to communicate to your staff that they're not allowed because you don't have a contract. And we would go that route first before we provide any sign.
And our camera system is robust enough to know where they're coming from, right?
It is, ninety-nine percent of the time.
Yeah.
How do you know that? Look at them.
The sheriff.
We've got a really good camera system. I've seen it work. It's pretty amazing.
Have you got any work done during the day?
You can get a lot of work done by looking at those cameras.
City manager and sheriff is in town.
I will say that Director Mulligan has been very, very nice in the pictures he has shown. They're much worse than that.
I would say there, there was more or less a public education campaign to talk to the business owners about this issue, was or not?
There was, there was. When was that? Early December, we handed out notices to every business in the uptown or downtown area and just letting them know that this was kind of coming and that they shouldn't have a contract. They needed to have a contract per city ordinance.
And I would just add one thing, even though there are criminal penalties, I'm pretty sure Mr. Dixon would say, do what you can to keep it civil and not bring it up into the criminal courtroom because we're already kind of overburdened. I'm sure Mr. Dixon probably, he's shaking his head to me. Make sure you say that less. So, but yet, at the very end, it's just about compliance. So hopefully no tickets will have to be issued at all. We can just kind of say, and if you do, and the warrant doesn't get it, then let's go collect it, let's go collect it.
We think after one or two tickets that we'll, we'll gain compliance and hopefully we'll get compliance once the word gets out.
Thank you for your efforts.
Thank you.
I have another question, Mr. Mulligan. The requirement for signage is that irregardless of receptacle or garbage can, or not garbage can, but a large garbage receptacle like you showed before. It's for both of them, right?
So our intent is to put those on the dumpsters and I'll have to talk to the city attorney about the, the receptacle issue. We wouldn't, the plan wouldn't be to put them at, it's usually at the, the large, the larger dumpster corrals. So putting them at each receptacle would, would be a bit of a challenge.
I've got, ready to finish?
Yes.
Thank you. I've got sort of a two-part question. Do we have enough dumpsters to bring everybody into compliance? And then do we have a method of helping them come into compliance with recommendations?
So to answer the second question first, we, you know, we've sent out the letters. We've contacted the business owners. It is part of an existing city ordinance that you're supposed to have a contract in place. This is just furthering that and, and defining what the, what the ticket or what the violation will cost you. But there are, so the receptacles are based on the volume of trash that is perceived by GFL or Republic at, at these locations. And if they get more businesses on board, they would increase their frequency. Or we would work with them to expand where possible the dumpster corral space.
Great.
And just on a slightly separate note, we're working with both GFL and, and Republic on leasing the, the space that they're currently in. So we're charging for that, but also as a part of that, they owe us their list of, of companies that use their services on a monthly basis. So that's how we'll check and make sure that each of those companies that says they have a contract does have a contract.
Great.
And they do lease the space, is that right?
They are there to provide that service. They do not provide a monetary, no, we do not have a lease current. And so we're in the middle of putting that lease together.
That, that's the next step in this process, is the lease that we'll be bringing forward with GFL and Republic for the use of that space. And I just written, just to, to clarify, the, if we, if council remembers, at least prior to January, back in the fall, we presented a very much more comprehensive approach to this where we had a, a scenario where we were going to pull all the, the merchants under the umbrella of the city, charge every business a fee, and then be responsible, the city responsible for contracting that service. Given the, the comments we heard from the public, we decided to, to kind of back off of that and look at the compliance issue based off of our ordinances. So it's been a step-by-step process. We'll continue to, to educate our, our merchants because we, that's what we want. We want compliance. We just don't want littering, basically. That's what we don't want. We don't want litter.
All right, we good? We just had the reading, right?
Yes.
And we're going to do the vote on Thursday?
Because, because the ordinance includes a criminal sanction, state law requires two readings. So I'd ask council to take a preliminary vote tonight and take a final vote on Thursday.
Make a motion to approve or the hearing?
Motion's been made by Councilmember, or, Scully, counsel, second by Mayor Proton Daniels. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
It's okay. My predecessor, he's a friend.
And Mayor, personal, personal privilege is wanted to shout out and recognize Mr. Donald Phillips for working on the ordinance, Assistant City Attorney.
You beat me to it. I started smiling. I started smiling when I heard that he wrote it. I was like, it is button proof. Nobody, nobody is going to get through that one. I'm glad you said that. I literally started smirking when they said, and Donald Phillips created this. We're in good shape. All right, we'll move on to item number nineteen.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number eighteen, memorandum of agreement with the North Carolina Department of Public Safety for the Town Common Bulkhead Project. I'll call Executive Director
Skip over our bulkhead, Mayor.
of Recreation and Parks and Capital and Facility Projects, Don Ockigan, for a short presentation.
I like that.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Hope y'all doing all right tonight. I do have a short presentation for you. So this memorandum of agreement is related to the fiscal year 2024 Department of Public Safety Disaster Appropriations Act of 2023, House Bill two fifty-nine. Now, this grant award and MOA establishes the five million dollars in funding that will be used towards the, to help cover the cost of the replacement for the Town Common Bulkhead, which has reached the end of its serviceable life. As previously documented, the replacement of the bulkhead was the number one project in the 2023 Recreation Parks Comprehensive Master Plan. And it's also vital to ensure future improvements to the Town Common are made, to, can take place with the placement. Next slide shows an overview of the design update that we'll share with council in January at the council planning session. The goal of this design is to protect the park from flooding, improve access to the Tar River, and enhance park activation through the introduction of new amenities. I will say this plan is taking a lot of time and Project Development Manager Martin Itham has put a lot of effort in this design, has done a great job working with Moffett Nickel. We got a couple meetings this week to kind of finalize some tweaks. So very excited about the, the design moving forward. Speaking of timeline, in January, we received the opinion of probable cost, which is approximately twenty-one point nine million. In August, we expect the design to be final. This winter, permit authorization process will be initiated by Moffett Nickel. And then if all goes as planned, the project will be ready for construction bids in 2025 of next year, spring of 2025. Staff's recommendation is to, the city council will authorize the execution of this, of the memorandum of agreement. And I'm glad to answer any questions.
I cannot make a motion fast enough on this one.
Wait a second, I got some reservations. I don't know if we should.
Wait a minute. We are so happy. I am so happy about this. And I think for our city, this is really just such a, a great grant. And we are very grateful to our local delegation for helping us with this. So yes, motion to approve.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Councilmember Daniels. I mean, sorry, Mayor Proton Daniels, I'm having a night tonight. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, let's move on to item number nineteen.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Item number nineteen, budget ordinance amendment number eight to the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four City of Greenville Budget Ordinance Number twenty-three dash oh forty-six, Capital Projects Fund Ordinance Number seventeen dash oh twenty-four, ARPA Fund Ordinance Number twenty-one dash oh fifty-three, Occupancy Tax Fund Ordinance Number eleven dash zero zero-three, and the Donations Fund Ordinance Number eighteen oh sixty-two. I will call forward Chief Financial Officer Jacob Joyner for a short presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the councils. This is a budget ordinance amendment number eight. It'll address the funds that the manager just listed. I will not go through those again.
Thank you.
The actual amendment, the first amendment will be increasing the general fund, adjusting revenues based on the actual revenues we're seeing. It'll increase the general fund five hundred and thirty-two thousand and sanitation fund will also increase thirty-three hundred. We will be adjusting our insurance reserves to projected actuals, and that will increase the general fund two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We will be appropriating fund balance to transfer funds to the Community Development Capital Project Fund for the zoning ordinance update. That will increase both the general fund and the Community Development Capital Project Fund by seventy thousand dollars. We'll be recognizing donations received for Police and Recreation Parks Department in the Donations Fund, and that will increase that fund by forty thousand dollars. We've been moving occupancy tax reserves to the Recreation and Parks to cover the cost for the sports complex feasibility study. That will lead to no change in the occupancy tax fund and will increase the Recom Parks Capital Project Fund by eleven thousand. We'll recognize grant funds received for the St. Andrews Spring Bait Project, and that will increase the Stormwater Capital Project Fund by six hundred and thirty thousand dollars. We'll be appropriating occupancy tax reserves for the CVB Sports Council expenses in the occupancy tax funds, and that will be no change in the occupancy tax fund. The increased housing budget to reflect program income, that will increase the housing fund six hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. The increase in the transit budget to recognize capital grants for the funding or replacement budgets, as well as a contribution from the VRF Fund. That will increase the transit fund approximately two point seven million dollars and will increase the VRF Fund five hundred and forty thousand. We'll also appropriate fund balance in the VRF to pay for previously approved. for previously approved vehicle purchases. That will increase the VRF $2.9 million. And we will be moving budget from the Dream Park Project to the Greenville Tarif Project in the ARPA Fund, which will be no net change there. That brings the operating fund budget after Amendment Eight to $176 million across the city, and we ask that council approve the budget amendment.
You know what I love about our financial department? They're like pinpoint on every dollar, and then when they go through this, they always round up. I've always noticed that Byron did the exact same thing.
I'd be here every, all night if I listened to the video.
They're like pinpoint on everything, but they're like, yeah, about 650,000. I get it, though.
I have a question. Can we go back to the previous slide before that? So the increased housing budget to reflect program income is, so I'm aware of other programs that may be depleted now, for example, like rental assistance. So with this amount, am I thinking about it correctly, that with this amount being added, is there any room to help with programs like that? Or is it like two separate things?
I would not be the best one to speak on that. Just I don't know the specifics of the individual grants and what the money can and cannot be used for. This is really just as they go through the housing fund, with the two grants they mainly deal with is home and community development block grants.
Right.
And the operation from the grants generate income on occasion. And when that happens, we have to use the funds towards grant eligible activities. And that's what we're kind of recognizing here, so they have the ability to do that.
And I'll answer that question as well. Councilmember Willis, that, it's a good question, because next month, Tiana at the workshop is going to be presenting how these dollars, along with the next year's budget, are going to actually be allocated. And we've got a whole host of programs that you will see how the dollars will go. And then she'll come back again in May and ask for adoption at the council member through a public, through a public hearing. So you'll get a chance to see exactly how those dollars are going to be allocated out to the programs.
Okay.
Why do you have to do that? You know she's not gonna sleep for a whole month thinking about that. You just teased her for an entire month.
It's some good, because we've reviewed the information so far, some good stuff.
She's gonna call Tiana after this.
VRF is Vehicle Replacement Fund?
Yes, ma'am, that's right.
Thank you.
All right.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Scully, seconded by Councilmember Blackburn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. All right, we will go on to, let me see, what is it, Agenda for next week?
Review of.
Yeah, review of the March 14, 2024 City Council Agenda.
And we have that displayed on the screen for the public to view, and we will just kind of pause as we move through that.
We gotta get some music to play. Jeopardy music or something. All right, move on to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to first apologize to our community for having to wait a whole month for the city manager's latest update on the 250th anniversary of the city. Tonight, we are going to spotlight another video within our reflection series. This video is with retired pediatrician Dr. Earl Trevathan, who has called Greenville Home since 1954. In this video, Dr. Trevathan reflects on a time when he and his colleagues rallied against segregation at the hospital to save the life of a newborn baby. And as a reminder, you can watch more videos. But go ahead, we'll hit this on, go ahead and start.
She was my patient, and she went into labor early. And Doctor Best called me and said, Mrs. Pediatric Lady is in the hospital in labor. I went over to visit with her, and she said, the doctors tell me this is my last pregnancy. Out of health reasons, I can't have it on. Save this baby. Well, the baby was born in three pounds, three ounces, eight, six ounces. And just for increasing the predictability of better survival, I took that baby upstairs to the white isolate, which is a sort of a unique space, bassinet, where you manage a premature baby, controlling oxygen, heat, easier to get to the baby and all that. Well, that was a black baby going upstairs to a white nursery. Looking at the babies, you could hardly tell, it's because a newborn, black is about as white as, white is black. But that got to the administrator's office news that I had moved that baby upstairs. He called me on the phone and said, he had just checked with the board trustees, and they thought it was better to leave things alone, so take the baby back down where it came from. And we'd deal with that problem later. But we didn't, we didn't put off till the, I flew out, Million Irons got involved. She went and talked, said, we're gonna keep that baby where it is, and blah, blah, blah. Well, three days later, a truck backs up from Pennsylvania with a new isolate, with a black nursery.
That was awesome. As a reminder, you can find more videos like the one we just saw, a variety of other things at our 250th Anniversary website, 250 greenvlenc.gov. And I'll also give a shout out that we have a student art competition underway, and we're working with schools to get entries, and the deadline is May 10. So you can also find more information about that at our 250th Anniversary website. Mayor, it's all of that.
And I am going to take my executive power to add the city attorney's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council members, as you may recall, Mr. Jonathan Scott Dixon, he goes by Scott, began work as an Assistant City Attorney in the City Attorney's Office on February 19. And Scott is here tonight. I'd ask him to stand up and welcome him. And Mr. Dixon, he worked as an Associate Attorney at the Dixon Law Group here in Greenville since 2014, and opened his own law practice, Law Offices of J. Scott Dixon in 2017. He served as Town Attorney for the town of Aiden for eight years, and Associate Attorney for Pitt County ABC Board for the past 10 years. And he's a Greenville native, received his Juris Doctorate with honors from North Carolina Central University School of Law, as well as a bachelor's degree in political science and philosophy from ECU. He's a pirate. So we welcome Scott.
All right. Should we start adding that every meeting, I think? Should we do the city attorney's reports? We're all gonna go, we're gonna all go by Emmanuel's office, and he's gonna have like video cameras. He's gonna be shooting a video every single one. I know. High, high expectations. I'm there. I'm there. All right, I think we are gonna start this end this time. Councilmember Robinson?
Down here, all right. Not quite two weeks ago, in the morning, a young man got up, went to school, and on his way to school, for reasons nobody knows, he was shot seven times. And fortunately for him, he recovered from his injuries, which is truly amazing. And he called 911, and our Greenville Police Department officers ran to the scene, knowing the man was armed. And it was caught on videotape. So I just want to say, that's what our Greenville Police Department's about. They went to the danger where most people ran from, from danger. They ran to it and confronted the man, and were able to apprehend him, and lucky for him, he was not injured. And thankfully, the young man, I don't want to mention his name because he might not want it publicly, but he is recovering from his injuries and very fortunate. But that just speaks volumes about our police department and what they do every single day. They run the danger and protect us, knowing somebody was armed. And I'll tell you this, I have seen literally, probably in my career, thousands of press conferences by law enforcement, from federal to state to local. And I saw our chief out there in the audience give a press conference that, in my opinion, was one of the best I have ever seen to represent the police department and represent the city of Greenville. And if you were talking about talking points and being professional, that could be a school to do so. So I really want to give the chief a public hand for doing such a great job. And also to those officers, we can't name them at this point, but thank you for protecting us, because if we really think about if that man who apparently has some significant mental health issues had made it across Elm Street on Fifth, that was at a time when classes are changing, students are going from the north side of Fifth Street onto the campus and campus on there. What could have happened? It could have been catastrophic for a loss of life in our community. And so the police department get great accolades and those officers for going to it. Number two, congratulations again on Pirate Fest 23 getting the award for festival. That's so awesome. And that brings up to mind, Pirate Fest 24 is April 20. Mark your calendars and come on down. Also, we have ECU baseball coming up this weekend, the girls, ECU softball's coming up this weekend. And we, I keep seeing, I just saw again, just a few moments ago, the Henry Hinton and his wife, they were out enjoying our Wildwood Park this afternoon, and just were raving about it on social media about how nice it is. So for those of you in the audience, and those of you who are watching this on TV, we got some beautiful weather coming up. Get out in the Wildwood Park and walk around it and see what, what a gem we have in that, and enjoy the outdoors. And I think that's all I wanted to speak about. And I think so. Oh, one more thing. Many of you already know that Youngfield, his dad has served us, served in many capacities, and now serves on the Greenville Utilities Commission. So he's following in some really good footsteps in terms of his family. So congratulations on that and welcome aboard. Mayor, thank you. That's all I've got to say today.
And I think that Councilmember Robinson said that he is going to be leading tours out at Wildwood Park.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I'm gonna walk around it, and Councilmember Blackburn's gonna run around.
There you go. There you go. Councilmember Scully.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to second Councilmember Robinson's thank you to the Greenville Police Department and Chief Sauls and those officers who ran towards the problem. Well, I would have run away. That was a terrifying situation, and I'm so thankful that we have law enforcement with the training and bravery to deal with that situation. So thank you so much. And thank you to Ms. Dixon for coming and giving the report for the Multimodal Transportation Commission. I look forward to working with you and the rest of the board. And I'm gonna make a motion this Thursday to get you another board member, and I can't wait to work with you, because those are incredibly important issues. The safety of our citizens is paramount. Getting our system to ADA compliance is incredibly important for so many obvious reasons, but we need to step up and get it done. And thank you so much for your work and for your clarity. Mr. Presentation tonight is really, really, really well done. So thank you. Also, you made me think of Wildwood Park. I've taken my daughters out there a couple of times the past few weeks, and it's really, really great. I would encourage all of our students to go out there and take advantage. And it was busy, so not too many of you. But seriously, go out there and enjoy it. I was also at River Park North yesterday. I had a little prayer service with our church out there, and it's, it's a really beautiful facility, too. We have so many great opportunities to get out into nature. I'm so thankful to live in a community that feels that those things are important. So thank you to city staff, Parks and Rec Department, and everybody that works to keep those facilities beautiful and accessible for all of our citizens. It really makes a big difference. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Willis?
Thank you, Mayor. It's March, and March is National Women's Month, or Women's History Month. Thank you to all the women who have such an invaluable contribution to our society. That's all I've got, Mayor.
Very nice, very nice. Councilmember Blackburn?
I appreciate Councilmember Willis talking about international, it being Women's History Month, because we did just celebrate on March 8, International Women's Day. And that was just a great day from the perspective of the attention that it seemed to have this year. It seemed to really be in people's minds. People were posting on social media, got calls from people that talked about it, got texts, you know, it just really meant a lot that we are acknowledging the often overlooked tremendous work done by women. And that was a great day. I have to, with the rest of my peers on council, make special mention to our police department and our officers and the leadership of Chief Sauls. I can't, I think that Councilmember Robinson really expressed it so incredibly well. What I would like to add to what he said is that what is so really distinguishing about this episode is that we had a violent episode with an active shooter, and a lot of unpredictability, and a lot of absolute terror and horror and fear taking place. This gunman, when police officers arrived, began shooting at our officers. The suspect was apprehended without injury. This is, I can't say enough about, I mean, I'm getting choked up about it. Why? Because when you can apprehend your suspect without further violence, you send a clear message to your community. And that is so important, because you prevent further fear, you prevent further uncertainty, you prevent that escalation of violence. To me, that is, I just can't say enough about how amazing it is and how it speaks to the caliber of our officers, the caliber of their training, and the caliber of their leadership. And again, I commend our officers. I can't say more than, than Les did, but just, we can't say enough about, about that and the way that episode was handled without further escalation of violence. And it is truly remarkable. And it says so much about the city of Greenville and our officers. We also had the child that had been kidnapped just a few days before. That was resolved, if I'm not mistaken, within 12 minutes. Just tremendous work by our officers, and we want to continue that level of quality and caliber. I would like to just take a minute to remember someone who left us this morning, and that was Inez Fridley, who held this seat for, I think, 16 years. She was the District Three voice for a long time. She was the representative for that area before, before we had districts, she was an at-large representative. And then once we had districts, she represented District Three. Inez did so much for our community at a time when these were new, even radical ideas. Sometimes people say that I have ideas that are out there. Well, let me tell you, Inez Fridley was talking about greenways in the 80s. Inez was talking about neighborhoods before you talked about neighborhoods. Inez changed the landscape of our community. And not only that, but as an, as an individual, she was just so engaged and so involved. She was a gardener. She has a beautiful, she had a beautiful garden, and she just was such a big part of her neighborhood throughout her life. She was a tremendous guide to me, and I am grateful to have known her, and our community will miss her. And Inez, thank you so much for what you did for our community. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Fordham?
I will mirror what Councilwoman Blackburn has just said. It is National Women's History Month, and I would like to further acknowledge Inez Fridley as a trailblazer for women in our community. And I'm really grateful that she was part of my team and a source for wise counsel. I also would like to thank Ms. Dixon for such a comprehensive presentation to us, and for addressing the needs and interests for all of our citizens in that presentation. We really appreciate your work. Thank you.
All right. Mayor Proton?
I also like to thank Ms. Dixon for your presentation and for the entire commission for the work that you all do for our city and the safety of our city. It is greatly appreciated. I do want to say Happy Women's International Month for March, but March is also Social Worker Appreciation Month. If you see a social worker, thank a social worker. Sometimes the work we do is thankless, but we always put your family first. And I say that, having been a social worker for over 20 years, I couldn't have chosen a better profession. And if I had to do it again, I would do it all over again. Also, I'd like to thank our police department for never giving up. I'd like to thank our police department for never giving up and giving us justice, justice for Jaden. It has bought the family closure. I have spoken with several people who attend Planet Fitness. And one thing that they've always said is, the police department drove by the makeshift memorial that the family had out there. And that's a reminder of the work that they had to do, the work to bring justice to this family, for this family, for this young man who was senselessly murdered. So thank you, Greenville PD, for that wonderful job. And also, thank you all during my time under the weather. Thank you all for your calls, for your gifts of love, for your prayers. It is greatly appreciated and will never be forgotten. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. I too want to reiterate, thank you to the Greenville Police Department for all your hard work. You guys do incredible things. Every day I get, I'm amazed by the good work that you guys do. And we're thankful that you guys are protecting our community and the citizens here. Also, I want to say congratulations to our ECU Women's Basketball Team. Did anybody see what happened today? They knocked off the number one seed in the American Athletic Conference Tournament. So they got a pretty good straight shot. They got a chance. Coach McNeil's going to try to take us to the, the dance again this year. So good luck to them. Of course, this will be a replay, so I'll probably eat my words in a couple of days, but I hope not. Congratulations to our ECU Baseball Team. They continue to do really, really well. Make sure you get out and support them. They're beginning the season. I didn't see the rankings today, but they were ranked number 11 this weekend. So, you know, they're doing really well. We've got a good chance of having a really good team and finishing really well this year. So they've set some records for attendance out there, which is great. It shows that pirate fans and our community are going out to support them. I think against Carolina, I think they had 6,000, I can't remember the exact total, but over 6,000 fans that were out there. And then I think at the Clark Leclerc, I think they had over 5,000, I think that first game that was there. So it's pretty awesome. It's a good experience out there. They've got a great team. Coach Godwin's doing a great job out there. And then finally, we've got, my wife has got her best friend from college in town. She is looking to potentially practice medicine here. And it was reminding me, I was thinking about it, we were out taking her around, a tour, trying to sell her on the community, show her how great Greenville is. She went to ECU, of course, but I'm not going to say how many years ago because I'll show all of our ages. But, you know, she's finally come back and she's got an opportunity to come here. She's looking at a couple of their communities. But I was thinking about it while I was out there. I was like, it's, it's up to us as citizens of Greenville to go out there and highlight our community. So anytime we have an opportunity to bring somebody to our community, maybe it's their first time, maybe they're coming back for the first time in, in a long time. But it's up to us to show them what's great about Greenville and why Greenville is such an incredible place to live, to work, to play. Look at that, I ran right into that one. But, you know, it, I thought about it. I was like, it's really important for us because we're the best salespeople for our community, right? We know it better than anybody else and we know how great Greenville is. And we know why we selected Greenville to make our homes. So make sure you get out there and, and highlight it and tell all the good things that are going on here and all the great things that are happening throughout our city. So it's very important to do that. So please do that every opportunity that you have. With that, need a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Councilmember Scully. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. We adjourn.